Good evening, I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM Tuesday, April 19th, 2011. At this time, I would like to invite you to join us for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Bowman?
Father of the county unite, thanking you for what you've done for us, Lord, and the fact that we live in America and that we're Americans, Father, and that we have the opportunity to come out and serve and be what you would have us to be. Father, we thank you for those that are serving overseas to protect us so that we have this right. Lord, we know that just recently, we brought a soldier home to be interned here in Henry County. Father, we don't take that lightly. Lord, we ask for wisdom and guidance to be what you'd have us to be. Lord, we ask you to lead, guide, and direct us. Father, we make the decisions that you would have us to make, that we would bring honor and glory to anything that we do here in the service for you and for our county. All these things, we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So moving next to you.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, I'd like to make the following announcement. The public hearing for MC-11-04, Lori Widerstein of McDonough, Georgia, requests a modification to a zoning condition. The property is located at 917 Jonesboro Road and Land Lot 127 of the 7th District. The request is to modify a zoning condition regarding vehicular access. The property is located within Commission District 3. Presenter Sherry Hopson Matthews of the Planning and Zoning Department. This item has been tabled and will not be heard at this meeting, so if you're here for this item, we will not hear it this evening. It will be re-advertised at a future meeting, and it will be advertised not only on the property, but also it will be advertised in the newspaper. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation. This is a very special proclamation tonight, and one that we don't do a lot of, but we felt like that this young man was very deserving of this honor. This is in appreciation of Owen Aaron for his thoughtfulness and generosity in helping others. Owen, are you here this evening? All right? Would you like, if you don't mind, if you could just come up here and stand so everybody can see you, I'm gonna read this for you, and then we're gonna ask you to come over, and we're gonna take a photograph. Mom, if you want to come up, you can. Okay, Dad gonna come up? All right? And let these fine people take a look at you. Whereas for some senior citizens who live alone, their pets are the only company, in these difficult economic times, seniors will often feed their own meals to their companion pets rather than let them go hungry. And whereas Owen Anderson, a 4th grade student at Pates Creek Elementary School in Stockbridge, came up with an idea to help pet owners who could not afford to feed their animals. Whereas for the past several years, Owen has been collecting pet food for a local shelter, asking for donations of pet supplies and food in lieu of presents on his birthday, through which he collected 500 cans of food to donate in the first year. And whereas after being voted Student Council President this year, Owen decided to go global with his pet food drive, organizing a drive at his elementary school where he enlisted the help of his classmates to collect pet food. And whereas in addition to motivating his school to hold the pet food drive, Owen was also successful in getting donations from the PTO and several local businesses. And whereas Owen and his classmates collected 783 cans of dog food, 808 cans of cat food, 158 pounds of dry dog food, 55 pounds of dry cat food, and 50 packages of pet treats, which he donated to the Henry County Senior Services Meals on Wheels Program, where it will assist the pets of seniors on a fixed income. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wants to express its appreciation to Owen for coordinating the effort of collecting the food and for his generosity and outstanding work in helping the senior citizens of Henry County and their beloved pets, and wish him great success in his future endeavors this 19th day of April 2011. And I'd like to ask you to join me in giving this young man a standing ovation. And Owen, if you would join us over here, we would like to present this to you and get a photograph. And ladies and gentlemen, I wouldn't be surprised in a few years if that young man isn't sitting up here in one of these seats. He's certainly a fine example for the young people in our community, and we're very proud to honor him this evening. The next item on the agenda is going to be recognition of the efforts to save a black lab named Sebastian. Kind of a unique situation that happened in our community, I believe it was last week. And who is going to come up and talk about Sebastian? We have someone from Animal Care and Control here? That's why you came dressed in high heels.
I was just told be here.
Go to the microphone.
Last Friday, about 9:30, I got a telephone call. We had received a 911 call that we had in Stockbridge, an older, slightly overweight black lab who had found himself 10 feet underground, 94 feet from the street, and an 18-inch drain pipe. The pipe ran between two houses.
You turned that ramp.
They're a little light. We had a lot of assistance. We were on scene about 9:30. The Henry County Police Department was on scene. The acoustics in the pipe, it was like Sebastian was right there. We couldn't locate him, the pipe was full of mud. Sebastian's owner had been missing him for two days. He had apparently snuck out, chased a cat into the exit end of this pipe. He got in about 150, 200 feet and just wedged. She did all the right things. She came to Animal Control, she posted loss signs. No Sebastian, literally vanished off the face of the earth. The next day, and she'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, she's out in the neighborhood looking, and hears Sebastian's voice booming from the sewer grate at the end of the street. She spends hours with a hand trowel, digging, trying to get her dog out. She's exhausted, he's exhausted. We came, the Water Department was wonderful. Water Department came with the cameras. The first camera wouldn't work. They came again with a change of wheels, that made the camera too big. The third change of wheels finally worked. Fire Department was on scene lending assistance. DOT came, Chris Painter with the Building Department, we found the lines. Finally, with the third camera, it ran through the pipe, and at 94 feet, we hit a nose. Johnny Barkley and his crew, with the permission of the county manager, who really was as much a part of this as everybody else, he and his crew started digging. That was about 3:30 in the morning. 10 feet down, we hit pipe. The Fire Department, DOT got the pipe open, and out sprang Sebastian. So we were just thrilled to be able to work together. I'm very proud. Neighbors came together that didn't know each other. We had neighbors lending assistance. I'm very proud to be a part of this Henry County family of employees. Everybody pulled together, did what we needed to do. It wasn't quite the Chilean miners, it wasn't quite baby Jessica in the well, but it was a proud, proud moment, and we're real glad to be here to celebrate that Sebastian's with us.
We woke him up, too.
Now, the county manager was a good sport at 3:30 in the morning.
Well, I know we have a number of people present that should be present here today that we want to mention that were involved with this rescue effort. Of course, Jerry, you, and as all good husbands do, they follow their wives around when their duty calls them.
He's married to a woman.
To extraordinary circumstances, so your husband Jeff was also involved with that. Amy Painter, who works with Animal Care and Control, her husband Chris, who is a facilities maintenance employee, is here. If you're here, if you would stand up when I call your name. Of course, Vince Farah, Johnny Barkley, and he's with DOT, Johnny Holland also with DOT, Mark Sexton with DOT. With our Fire Department Squad 11, we have Leon Peniman, Richie LaCroy, Matthew Rabe. Also Battalion 2, Tommy McLean. Our Water Department employees Keith Moss, Todd Bracken, Jermaine Bridges, and Mitch Freeman, who is a neighbor to Ms. Payne, and Ms. Payne's here with Sebastian. And it's my understanding that these were neighbors that had never met one another until the night that Sebastian had his incident, and he came out in the middle of the night to help, and I believe that someone tied a rope to his leg and he tried to climb down the pipe.
Rope to his ankles, much to the sagrated dismay of the Fire Department, I will have to say. He was in with a rope around his ankles, about 100 feet?
140.
140 feet. You could barely glimpse Sebastian's eyes with a flashlight. The Fire Department was Johnny on the spot, getting oxygen down there, making sure he got out safely, and you know, it was, I hate to say a good time was had, but it was different. Well, we here at Animal Control a lot, how can you do what you do? I mean, it's such a tough job, and we always say, there is a lot of bad, but we have to make, stretch the good to cover that, and it was a good, good night.
And certainly, we want to give a round of applause to these individuals for their help with this. And I wanted to ask Ms. Payne, too, if she could come forward with Sebastian, because to see how cute he is, so everybody could see how cute he is. And Mr. Holmes wanted to say something, and Mr. Bowman?
Beautiful dog.
Mr. Holmes?
I tell people in the 5th District all the time that we are in very good hands in Henry County, and once again, you guys have proven that to be a fact. So I just want to say, we appreciate you and thank you for your service to the county. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman?
Did we find the cat? Seriously, I was looking at Sebastian out in the hall. He's been in there a couple of days, right? Looks like he ate very well.
With us in the hall?
I was only kidding. I was, to the cat people, I'm only kidding.
Now Julie, would you like to try to get a photograph of all the rescuers and Sebastian? Okay. If you guys could come and join here at the front of the stairs, and let's see if we can get y'all up, all up there for a picture. It's time to get down to business now. But thank y'all all for being here, it's a great story. We're gonna move on to our Planning and Zoning Services. We have a public hearing for RM-11-02. Brad Thomason of Nashville, Tennessee, requests a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to C2 General Commercial for property located on the north side of Highway 81 East, east of Sowell Road and Land Lot 170 of the 7th District. The property is located within Commission District 3. Our presenter is Stacy Jordan, Planning and Zoning Department, Exhibit Number 15. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. This property is a four-acre tract out of a 10-acre parent parcel that is located on the north side of Highway 81 East, just east of Sowell Road before you get to the Old Jackson commercial node. The property is currently zoned RA, and the applicant is requesting a C2 to accommodate a Tractor Supply Company store that would be approximately 19,000 square feet. And it will have an accompanying outdoor display area for their merchandise. The future land use map calls for low-density residential, but this property is also located within the Old Jackson Activity Center. And according to the comprehensive plan, the county is planning for there to be an additional 70 acres of commercial within this activity center. Now normally, what we would like is for a large development to master-plan the activity center before developing, but this proposed development at four acres is underneath the threshold of five acres to master-plan, or for there to be a master-plan in place before developing. The zoning advisory board recommended approval with several conditions, and I'll display these conditions now. And these conditions are in the executive summary within your exhibit book. In the meantime, staff understands that there has been discussion about amended conditions. And these amended conditions are a handout on the bench at this time. If you don't have them in front of you, let me know. I happen to have an extra copy. And Madam Chairman, if I may, I would like to go through the changes in these amended conditions.
Please.
If you look at the Condition Number 1, there's a highlighted portion to add split-face block to the allowable building materials of brick, stone, stucco, or glass. What we would like to do is to extend the allowance for split-face brick in Conditions 2 and 3 as well, which is not highlighted, so I wanted to point that out. Condition 2 treats the dumpster enclosure, and so the amended condition should include split-face brick for the dumpster enclosure as well in Condition 2. Condition 3 treats in part the fence that will go around the outdoor display yard, and so we would, split-face block should be included as an allowable building material for the fence as well in Condition Number 3. Condition Number 7 has been modified as well, and that has been highlighted, and it reads, "The applicant agrees that for a period of five years from the date of rezoning, the uses of the property will be limited to retail farm supply and an associated lawn and garden outdoor display area. After the five-year period expires, allowable uses for the property shall be consistent with those permitted in the C2, with the exception of the following uses which are prohibited on this tract of land: gun sales and pawn shops, bar or drinking beverage establishment, portable or mobile restaurants and food services, temporary and outdoor sales, transient merchant and sidewalk sales, caterer and food service contractor, road ground passenger and transit transportation, taxi office, postal courier and messenger services, amusement, sports, or recreation establishment, rental of vehicles and equipment, restaurants, trains, or other rail movements, movies, concert, or entertainment shows, or wireless communications facilities which are cell towers."
Does any board member have a question for Stacy? Okay? If not, at this time, I'd like to call the applicant forward, or the applicant's representative. And if you could please state your name for the record, and you have 15 minutes to add any additional information that may have been left out. Good evening.
I'm Steve Moore, Moore Bass Consulting, 324 Industrial Boulevard in McDonough, Georgia. And I'm here tonight representing Mr. Brad Thomason on the proposed rezoning for the Tractor Supply. You've got the condition up there, just wanted to give you an idea of what this building, what the plan for this building is. As Stacy mentioned, the site is located on the north side of 81. The application consists of 19,000 square feet of building and about 69 parking spaces. Obviously, access will be via Highway 81. We've already had discussion with Georgia DOT, and they've preliminarily approved that location for the driveway, and it will have acceleration, deceleration lanes at the entrance. The zoning advisory board meeting, obviously, we had a unanimous approval there, and mainly, and have had tremendous kind of positive support for this project, because it provides a very much-needed service to those larger rural agricultural homeowners, a lot of which reside in this area. I have read those recommendations. I have just one question to ask and possible amendment to that. In reference to the condition about the knee wall along the screening, along the outdoor display area, I was wondering if we would like for that to really only apply to the front of the building? The other side is adjacent to a landscape buffer, and I think, at least my understanding was, the idea was the visual presentation from 81. Just if that's possible to clarify that, of, I mean, I don't, it may have been the intent was to just be in the front, but I was just wanting a clarification on that.
Mr. Stamey?
Does that make sense what I'm saying? Ray?
Yeah, you're referring to the storage area, right? Correct.
Yeah, there's a, in the condition, number three, the very last sentence talks about the three-foot-high knee wall.
Yeah, and that's also where the area where the fence will be mounted on the top of the.
That's correct. And my question is, does that only apply to the front of the building, or would it need to go down the side, which is adjacent to the landscape buffer? If possible, we'd like for that just to be, apply to the front, but that was just a question that I had.
Okay.
Commissioner, what we could do is to insert the language, if that's your wish, so that it would read, "The screening fence shall feature a brick and/or stone, or split-face block base along the front, matching the facade of the building a minimum of three feet in height."
What are you talking about, 36 inches high?
Yeah, that's, what he just said is exactly what we were, what we would ask, is that that three-foot-high wall just be required on the front of the building.
Okay.
And I apologize for my voice, I'm just trying to fight this thing off. So if we could just, that was just one possible question that we had about the revised petitions. Short of that, these all make sense, the applicant is in agreeance with those. And I'm gonna let Mr. Thomason speak for just a minute about Tractor Supply, just so you guys know what a good neighbor these guys are, and what a good business it would be to have in the county. So if I could, right now, I'm just gonna let Brad come up and speak.
Before you leave, I have a question, gentlemen. You say you do have DOT preapproval on a curb cut that will allow you off 81?
Yes, sir.
Is it left and right?
Yes, full access. We just have XL, Dcel lanes on both sides.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I'm Brad Thomason. I'm in the real estate business, developer for Tractor Supply Company. I live in Nashville, Tennessee, 943 Oak Valley Lane. And I have been, Mr. Mansky and I have been developing for Tractor Supply for over 12 years. Most likely, 70% of the stores that are what we call groundups, prototype stores, have been developed by our company. We have stores in Griffin, and Wynder, and Commerce, and Macon, and Warner Robbins, and Nunnan Stockbridge? Stock, what we call the Nunnan area?
I know.
Anyway, y'all know where Nunnan is. Every time I mention Nunnan, somebody says, oh no, that's another area. But we, they've been a tremendous company to represent, they've been around about 60 years. And just about the last 15 years have they really catapulted with their success. They have now got over 1,000 stores nationwide. They're growing at about an 8% annual rate, and I know you, you're probably much more versed to financial information than I am in economic information, but the last three or four years, retailers have probably been digressing in their expansion more than adding stores. And Tractors has had tremendous success financially based on focusing on this one model, and that it's serving the rural community. And I don't know that I have probably worked in an area that has a better feel. John Mansky probably looked at about 45 different parcels in, within about a 15-mile radius of McDonough, Georgia, before we settled on this one. And some of it had to do, obviously, with the topography, along with the demographics. Tractor Supply does their cattle counts and horse count, and it just, this particular market that Mr. Neighbors has some property was the most suited for what they do, which is selling all the stuff that you need out here. And they're a tremendous neighbor for the fact that they get very involved in the community. They will be a very low-impact retailer, from the fact that they only have about 20 customers an hour during the week, and 40 an hour on the weekend. They will certainly respond to Stacy's request as it pertains to deliveries during the day. Lighting as well will basically them and shut down at night. So they're gonna be here just to make things happen during the day for your demographic base. And I think you're, another extreme positive is the fact that they're very, very financially stable. They close 1/10th of 1% of their stores annually. So you can be secure that Tractor Supply is gonna be there for a long haul. They'll be signing a 15-year lease with me with four or five-year options, and it'll continue from there, certainly. And so that's gonna be good for your county because of the tax base. It's gonna be good for employment as well, and it's gonna be good when other retailers come into markets and they see stores that are alive. It makes them feel better about doing business in these counties versus going by stores that are dark. And so you can feel good that this company is gonna be in business, and they're gonna be very professional, and we're here to take care of, take care of business. And thank you so much for the opportunity of hearing us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
He can speak a lot, a lot better than I can about Tractor Supply. But it, there is been a lot of positive support.
is selling all the stuff that you need out here. And they're a tremendous neighbor for the fact that they get very involved in the community. They will be a very low-impact retailer, from the fact that they only have about 20 customers an hour during the week, and 40 an hour on the weekend. They will certainly respond to Stacy's request as it pertains to deliveries during the day. Lighting as well will basically them and shut down at night, so they're gonna be here just to, to make things happen during the day for your demographic base, and I think you're, another extreme positive is the fact that they're very, very financially stable. They close 1/10th of 1% of their stores annually, so you can be secure that Tractor Supply is gonna be there for a long haul. They'll be signing a 15-year lease with me with four or five-year options, and it'll continue from there, certainly, and so that's gonna be good for your county because of the tax base. It's gonna be good for employment as well, and it's gonna be good when, when other retailers come into markets and they see stores that are alive. It makes them feel better about doing business in these counties versus going by stores that are dark. And so you can feel good that this, this company is gonna be in business, and they're gonna be very professional, and we're, we're here to take care of, take care of business, and thank you so much for the opportunity of hearing us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
He can speak a lot, a lot better than I can about Tractor Supply. But it, there is been a lot of positive support for this project, and I know some people may be here tonight, but I wanted to just take a quick second, if I could, and just ask anybody that's here in support of this rezoning request to stand up for one second. Thank you. This is a very compatible land use, and very compatible with the surrounding areas and with the rural nature of this section of Henry County. Short of that, I think Stacy's pretty well covered the request. You guys have seen the conditions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does any board member have a question, Mr. Stany?
No, I'm good right now.
Well, I have to say, I think I've seen a miracle today. Typically, we don't get people that show up in favor of zonings, it's usually the other way around.
We've done a lot of, since this application came up, I've done a lot of asking of people that shop at a store like that, and the answer I consistently get is, "I either have to go to Covington or Conyers." And I think the fact that there's something local that, like I said, fills a need, I think that, that's probably a lot of the reason.
Thank you. Well, at this time, I, I'll reserve the remainder of your time in case you need to come back. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Okay, if you would, please step forward and state your name and address for the record, and there's a total of 15 minutes in order to share your comments.
My name is Bonnie Hardy. I live at 85 Sowell Road. I also own one of the pieces of property that is directly across from the lot in question, the corner of Sowell and, and Highway 81. I'll have to say, I've shopped at Tractor Supply Store in Milledgeville, and we all like it, and we think it's fun and interesting, and they have great stuff. Lovely and interesting and filling a need as much as it does, it's still really a glorified hardware store. The recently opened Ace Hardware rarely has more than one or two customers in it every time I've been in there. I'm not sure what makes us think that Tractor Supply is gonna have a better track record. I suspect that when BJ's Warehouse opened up their store on Jonesboro Road, they were equally as enthusiastic and expectant about the anticipated success of the store, and that facility is now closed. You guys know better than I do how many vacant, unoccupied, half-built retail and residential properties we now have in Henry County. I've lived here for 22 years, and it seems to me that a wise course of action would be to concentrate on improving and maintaining what we currently have, and waiting until we have a real economic recovery until we add and build more. I'm very realistic, and I know very well that my voice may not be heard or carry any influence, and I know that the development may very well happen. My request to you guys is that you do it in a way that's gonna have the least amount of impact, both on my property values, as well as the quality of life while I continue to live there. One of the big concerns that I have is the traffic on Highway 81, often at all times during the day and on weekends, there's a bottleneck between Racetrack Road and Old Jackson Road, and any customer traveling west on Highway 81 wanting to turn into the proposed Tractor Supply lot is gonna add significant backup, particularly if they're pulling a trailer, and they're gonna need a big gap of traffic before they can turn in. From the drawing that I saw on the website today, the driveway into this facility would be directly across the street from my property, and this is the first time today here that I heard that there was a pre-approval or conversation about acceleration or deceleration lanes, and I think that, that obviously is a common sense and necessary approach. And my request to you is that whatever land is necessary either to widen Highway 81 or to build those, acceleration or deceleration lanes come from Mr. Neighbors' property and not from my property. I have no financial interest or benefit or gain from this, I only stand to lose financially from this. Nobody's gonna wanna buy my property as residential, being directly across the street from Tractor Supply. The only way or time I might see any gain or benefit from it is when I wanna turn around and sell the property, assuming I can sell it as commercial, but I have no intention of doing that anytime soon. I hope that, you know, we, we're hearing from them that they're gonna be good neighbors. I just wanna observe and share my observation. I drive by the Tractor Supply Store in Warner Robbins on Watson Boulevard on a regular basis, and it's really, it's not well-kempt, it's unsightly, and it does, it's just an eyesort of the surrounding community. A previous owner of that property at the zoning advisory board meeting said that they all knew, or we all knew that it was inevitable that Highway 81 was gonna become commercial. It's only inevitable if you choose to make it so, and you do have a choice to do otherwise. I have a couple of other just observations. I think it was Mr. Thomason said that the store is good for business or good for employment. At the zoning advisory board, when he was asked how many people they employ, he said it was between 20 and 25, and some of them are part-time, some of them are full-time. That's a minimal impact as far as employment, in my opinion. One of the other things that happened at the zoning advisory board meeting was that, I believe, again, it was Mr. Thomason suggested that they, the company normally accepts deliveries between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and somebody on the zoning advisory board suggested that we expand that from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I live there. I hear what happens on Highway 81. I hear the trucks at the BP and the stores on the corner. I hear them every morning. My request to you is that if you consider making that be a much more neighbor-friendly timeframe, perhaps from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Couple of other things that I just heard, Mr. Thomason suggested that at peak hours, it would be between 20 and 25 customers. The document that is available on attachment A that I pulled off the internet before I came in this morning suggests that their busiest time is between noon and 5:00 PM on Friday, and all day Saturday, and their peak hours per, peak periods per hour is 35 to 55 customers, so that makes me suspicious of other things that we've heard. I don't know what's true. You know, I, I live in Henry County, I like living in Henry County, I wanna continue living in Henry County and feeling like I have some quality of life while I'm here. So thank you for any consideration that you can give those of us that still live right there, and they shop there, but wanna still have some quality of life while we do live here. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another citizen that wishes to speak. Yes, sir, if you could please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and we still have eight minutes and about 45 seconds.
All right. My name is Mike Glover. I'm here representing my, my 82-year-old mom, Jean Glover, who's sitting here behind me, and also representing myself. My mom's property is directly adjacent to the property under consideration here. Her driveway runs directly beside what is proposed here, and would be on the side where the gentleman is already trying to get some dispensation for how much effort they need to put into that screening, into that split face block, but that's another issue. I'm also representing myself, because I own a house that's two doors from this particular property. To start with, let me, a little information about myself. I, I have been a builder, I've been a developer, I've been through this property, this process from both sides of the table, and I do understand sort of how it works. I understand that people need places to shop, people need places to eat, and places to shop for farm equipment. I'm sure that Tractor Supply is a fine company. But what doesn't make sense to me is the way this zoning is working. It is, as I understand zoning, it's a sort of hierarchical system where you have agricultural land, abutting low-density residential, which abuts medium-density residential, owned to high-density residential, low-density commercial, and on, and on up the hierarchy. What we're proposing to do here, what they're proposing to do here is to take agricultural land with horses grazing on it and turn it into C2 commercial. It goes, it, it sort of breaks all the rules. It goes against everything that good zoning and good land planning stand for. I second everything the woman has said in regards to the traffic issues. You can barely get out of the driveway there, onto 81 as it is now, this can only make it worse. Again, don't object to progress, but this just seems to be a zoning whose time and place is wrong. Agricultural to C2 breaks all, all of the guidelines of good land planning. As I understand, staff original recommendation was against the zoning. Somehow it got through the zoning board. I was out of town when that happened, wasn't able to express my opinion on that, but I guess that pretty well sums it up. I just think it's, it's just a wrong type of zoning, wrong time, wrong place, and we do oppose it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's If not, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's And if the applicant would come forward? Is there anything else you would like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to address a couple of those, a couple of the issues. One, specifically relating to the number of anticipated shoppers in the stores. The number that she had referenced was the peak hour number of customers, the number that we discussed at the zoning advisory board meeting, which I know you guys weren't at, but was 20 people per hour, and that was the, during, during normal business hours, not the peak hours, just so we're clear on that. We haven't misrepresented anything. And again, most of the shoppers that are there are two per car, so you're talking about half that many vehicles that's coming in and out, in and out of the, of the facility. And then, from Mr. Glover's comments, we understand we are in a rural area. The plan that we've prepared takes into consideration what our ordinance has called an undisturbed buffer, but if it's an undisturbed buffer, that means it's gonna stay grassed, so our proposal will include significant landscaping around the perimeter of the property to buffer any of those neighbors, and with the concessions of the, the limitation of after-hours deliveries and trash pickup, and the screening, the landscaping, I think that's, I mean, it's a very fair way of approaching this project, just recognizing that we are proposing this thing in the middle of a field, so. That's all I have to add.
Does any board member have any additional questions or comments? If not, Mr. Stany, this lies in your district, and I will look to you for a motion.
Ma'am, Chair, I think this is a very unique night. I got five board members, nobody's got a comment, but I got 30 people out there in favor of a zoning. I think it's very unique, but, Steve, a couple of things I wanna touch on is, you are gonna, you're gonna put the screening fence along the side, correct?
All of the fence, yes, sir. All I was asking about was the knee wall.
Okay, I'm fine with stopping in the front, long as we have the, the fence along the side, and I need to make sure that the Glover property is taken care of as far as vegetated buffer. To increase the vegetation buffer that represents this property line as well as that property.
Yeah, we have a 40-foot buffer currently planned along that, and it will be a planted buffer.
Okay. Before I make my motion, ma'am, you, you brought up some good points, some of the same things I had concerning the safety issues, I was, I was highly concerned. DOT controls that road, state DOT controls that, that route being Georgia 81. I wanted to make sure that they have actually applied for a curb cut and was awarded a curb cut based upon our zoning request tonight, if approved. I wanna make sure that intersection is safe. The second thing is, on the group of the conditions that we put on there, down at the bottom, we put a five-year stipulation to tie them to a Tractor Supply place, because sometimes as board members, we get baited and switched and stuff, that somebody comes in and zones something. I wanted to be sure, because I think the majority of these people sitting here tonight want a Tractor Supply place, and that's what that condition is, is to tie it down to make sure that we are actually getting what we're zoning, correct, Steve?
That's correct.
So I just wanted, I had some of the same concerns you did, but that's why we kinda did what we did.
May I ask a clarifying question about the acceleration or deceleration lanes? Does that mean there's a center lane?
Ma'am, we need you to step forward to the microphone so everyone can hear your question.
I would just like clarification about what the acceleration or deceleration lanes actually are. Is there one, would there be one in the center of the east and west traffic for, and then one at the curb cut, or, you know, how is?
If that helps right there, that shows, that's the edge of, the existing edge of pavement of Highway 81. That's the deceleration lane there, and that's the acceleration lane, so it's all on the north side of 81.
So it's all on the north side of 81, so it does absolutely nothing to eliminate or address the concern about eastbound traffic wanting to turn across the westbound lane to get into the parking lot? And, and that's a problem now without a Tractor Supply store there. I have, often I'm waiting five minutes at the corner of Sowell Road to turn onto Highway 81 going in either direction, so this, whatever this XL or Dcel lane just does not address the concerns that I have. Thank you.
Chair, would you like to address that? I know I'm pulling you into a state route, would you, would you like to make a comment about that?
State reviews, they'll be the agency that determines what she's asking for, is a left-turn lane into the site. GDOT generally does a study on the amount of trips in that site, and if it's, I believe if it's a certain amount of left turns into it, they may ask for that, but the only way I could tell you whether it's gonna be required or not, it'll be in the permit stage. GDOT will, if it meets a condition of, if they think there's enough left turns within an hour, based on the size of the business and another, and the number of trips it generates, they'll require a left-turn lane. If they require a left-turn lane, it's very likely that they'll expand the road on both sides of the road. So if they do require that left-turn lane, it's very likely that, that lane will be split. You know, if they add a 12-foot lane in the middle, they'll widen six foot on each side, and then on the applicant's side, they're very likely to widen another 12-foot for the Dcel lane. But that is solely GDOT's call, and that'll be addressed in the permit process.
Okay.
I didn't have too many comments. I did wanna clarify a couple of things, and it's kinda, you know, really, it's, we've, we've been looking at this, when did we start this new land use plan? Was it '90?
It was, it was the spring of 2009?
2010? We started the process in 2002.
2002.
I bet you argue that point started in 1999.
Well, that's what I thought it was, 99, so in 20, in 99, and we really just recently adopted, and before we did that, for, for the guys out there, I mean, we went all over the county, basically, holding town hall meetings to show where these activity zones would be, and explain what is actually intended for the activity zone, so we don't have spot zoning all over the county. And there's places where we do, I mean, it's happened in the past, but the reason for this map was so that we could, we could plan where we're gonna put it, and I will tell you that in, in my district, and others that I, 'cause I went to a number of the town hall meetings, there were times when a citizen came up and said, "Hey, I really don't like that," you know, and, and made some, some recommendations or some changes. Those changes were listened to, and the changes were made. And I know that it took, you know, for the, for the period of time that, that I've been in office, which is almost five years now, that that map was being worked, and, and we met on it a number of times so that, you know, it could go there, and so, yes, it's a rezoning, but in the same sense of the word, it's a rezoning within an area that was set aside to be rezoned. I know that probably doesn't make a lot of sense to, a lot, but it's trying to explain, you know, okay, this is Tractor Supply, you know, right a drugstore, a bank. I mean, there's a lot of things that are planned for these activity zones, and so, you know, for us, it's, it's, it's difficult a lot of times to try and work within that system, but at the same time, this thing's been going on, thank you Commissioner Holder, since 1999, which was, you know, five years before I went in office, so, or six years or even more. But I mean, the bottom line is, is that it made its passes, it went to the different cities, it went to the different areas, and they were all advertised, and so it, it gets a little, sometimes we get a little bit thinking, you know, well, you're just gonna pass it anyway. Well, you know, we're really not, I mean, but at the same token, it's set for a, a Pacific area that's outlined and defined for that, and there was plenty of opportunities for us to make, you know, the comments. I, I, I'm not trying to be adversarial at all, I'm just trying to explain- I'm not trying to be adversarial at all, I'm just trying to explain what happens up here and what we go through as commissioners, you know? Because these activity zones are all over the county. How many do I have? I mean, I know you don't know off the top of your head, but I must have a dozen. I mean, we all have these activity zones, and all of them have been in the works and plans and everything, like I said, since 1999. So hopefully that, I know that doesn't really help a whole lot, but I just wanted to try and explain, just, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just speaking for me. Because I was in on the meetings, and I went to the town hall meetings, and I listened to the complaints, and some of them, you know, some of them we were able to get changed, right? Am I right? Okay. So we were able to make some changes where the interest was there and where the people came and showed up for them. So, you know, I just wanted to let you know, that's what we did. And, you know, like I said, I'm not speaking for the board of commissioners, I'm speaking only for myself. That sometimes we get a little, you know, we feel like, you know, we're trying to do the best we can, but, you know, it's a balancing act because of what we've got and where we put, and where things go. And this is really not a rezoning. It's in, it is, but it's really not because it's in that activity zone. So anyway, that's all I have on my chair. Thank you.
Well, I think one of the things that we're having to get used to for the first few years that I was on the board before we adopted this comprehensive land use plan, the zoning patterns that we had in the county were similar to what you see played out in Clayton County, a Tara Boulevard, where all of your commercial is a long strip that took both sides of the road for miles on end. And when we started having our public hearings, our citizens said, look, we don't want that type of development pattern here. It's ugly, it's cluttered, it's, you will see areas fall into rapid decline in a development pattern like that. And so our citizens said, we want something different. And to go back to the nodal type of development is not a new concept, but it's the way that cities and towns and townships were built at the early beginnings of our country. And it builds a better sense of community, and it certainly makes for more convenience, and it will hopefully keep properties from falling into decline. The thing I can say is that since we've adopted the comprehensive land use plan in the ULDC, this board has been very consistent. We were determined going into this that we were going to follow it, because that's something that we had heard prior to that, is that why don't you just follow your map? And it's tough to do that, but after, and we started this process when I came on the board in 2005, and we threw out everything the board had done up to that point and started over again. Because we didn't want a one-size-fits-all, we wanted what the Henry County citizens wanted. So once we adopted it, we set our mind that this is the way that we're going to do this thing. And it is tough, and it's a change, but that's the question we consistently ask, and I'll ask again, is this fully compliant with the future land use plan? And is this what has been planned for this particular area? Does it meet those requirements?
This is an instance that calls for true planning. And so there's a way that you can look at it to say, specifically, the future land use map designates that area in the yellow color, which technically stands for low-density residential. But you'll notice that buffer that's displayed, the boundary line, is for the Old Jackson Activity Center. Within that activity center, the future land use map and the comprehensive plan offers a typology. And that typology is actually within the staff's report, it's on page two at the bottom. And what it says is that we intend for there to be additional commercial within the boundaries of that activity center. And if you look at the red portion in the middle of the boundary, that red portion plus the parcels that have already been zoned commercial are about 38 acres. There are about 360 acres within the boundaries as they're displayed. The future land use map calls for there to be 30% non-residential. Well, the 38, there would have to be 70 additional acres to the 38 that are displayed and already zoned to meet the 30%. So there would have to be nearly twice as much commercial as what's displayed or what's already been zoned. So in that sense, yes, it complies with the future land use map concerning activity centers and specifically the Old Jackson Activity Center, because we plan for there to be twice as much commercial as is displayed or already zoned.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Mr. Holder.
This is a very unique zoning. I've sat here for many years, and what's unique about it is normally, the people who are opposed turn out. Those who are in favor are at home with their families. It's just reversed tonight. Do I have a stake in this zoning? I think I do, because Highway 81 is a district line. So anything on the south side of 81 is in the district that I represent. I have never seen, I don't believe, this many people show up in support of a zoning in the 15 years that I've sat here. So I don't know, somebody has done some promotion or done something, and again, I understand the two that spoke against it. And I can assure you, there are more that are opposed to it than are here tonight. And there are probably more that are in favor of it than are here tonight. But it's just a total reverse of what we normally see as a board, because those who are opposed are normally the ones that show up, and the ones in favor stay home. So that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? If not, Commissioner Stamey, I'm going to look to you for a motion.
Steve, I made a small change on the back on number nine, no deliveries or trash pickup between 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And also, I did add split face block to number two and three.
So you changed, sorry, you said number nine is 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM, instead of 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM?
Correct.
Commissioner Stamey, I don't work for Tractor Supply, I'm in the real estate business as a developer. I would have to say that that may be difficult for them. I think that there could be, you know, when we're saying deliveries, they don't have many deliveries. You know, this store is 19,000 square feet. Their sales compared to a grocery store are, you know, a lot less. So they don't have inventory turn like they do in grocery stores. People who live in this area are not going to be seeing freight trucks coming in and out of this store. They'll just have a few a week, most likely. And so to sit here and tell you I can do this, you know, to go from 7:00 to 8:00, I don't know that that's can. I'm curious as to what real impact having a delivery at 7:00 in the morning versus 8:00 in the morning really.
It's the PM that you were proposing to change. They were trying to restrict them to earlier.
Oh, just to.
Shut down at 8:00 instead of 9:00.
My apologies, I was thinking you wanted to limit them, because sometimes they will have an earlier delivery like at 7:00, but 7:00 to 8:00 PM. My apologies, I think we'll be fine.
I'm just trying, what do your store hours typically?
They'll vary, they'll vary, but for the most part, I think they're closed at, you know, probably in the 8-ish area, I would assume, 8 to 9 o'clock. But they don't go much later than 9:00, that I know of. But my apologies for causing more confusion there. And second of all, I do want to clarify what Steve said. I did stand up here and say that it was weekend hours, weekend hours, they may have 40 per hour. She said I misrepresented it. I don't, the one thing I've said up here this lot, weekend hours, they'll have 40 an hour, weekdays is 20 an hour.
Brad, you didn't build Thomas Crossroads, the one in Noonan, correct?
Yes.
You did build that one?
Yes.
That's a nice store, I had an opportunity to go there.
Well, yeah, we did, and that was, I'm glad I'm still standing here after having built that store, because the demands were far more than could have been financially met. But it's, but hopefully, I'll have to say, Tractor Supply is just, or is much more excited about this store. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What was the second condition?
I just added a split face block to two and three, like staff had requested.
And then the change with the knee wall on the front?
Correct.
The screening fence down all sides?
On number three.
Yes, sir.
Okay. With those changes.
I have a question, and this is in number seven, item number seven, and I guess Stacy, this is more for you, and what they're excluding is a bar or drinking beverage establishment. Don't you drink all beverages?
We can clarify that wording.
I think it's straight up.
What does that mean? No coffee shops?
I think that's what they want to train.
That may be the way that the category reads in the ordinance, but we can clarify what we mean at this time.
We need to take a look at that. Alcohol.
If we mean alcohol, we should say alcohol.
Yeah, let's change that, put that in there.
I got it right here, if you want to look at it. What it says, um, let's see.
But I think that it would benefit us to actually say exactly what is meant, if we mean the alcohol drinking establishment.
It does say alcoholic. It says bar or drinking parentheses alcoholic beverage establishment.
So let's insert that word.
That's fine.
That makes more sense.
That was the intent.
Thank you.
Fine with that condition. Okay, with that, those changes, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the nine conditions.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Stamey, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're moving to the county attorney. We're going to have a discussion regarding an ethics policy, that's exhibit number 16. Actually, I think we may have a new handout on that. Exhibit number 16 and a handout.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. Standing before me, with me this evening, are members of the in-house Ethics Ordinance Review Committee, myself, the Human Resources Director, Angie Bailey, the Communications Director, Julie Hoover Ernst, and Michael Harris, the Planning and Zoning Services Division Director. We were charged with the task of reviewing the existing county ethics ordinances and the proposal that was submitted by 3DCC. And I'd like to thank the committee members for their time and effort, and we would like to present to you all, for the first time as a full body, the results of our review and our suggested changes for you all to consider this evening. I will say that we have made presentations in groups of three to you all, but this is the first time that you, as a full board, have had the opportunity to hear this presentation and get the benefits of each other's thoughts and opinions. So we'll just get started. Last year, the board was presented with a proposed ethics ordinance that was prepared by 3DCC. And with that was a comprehensive comparative analysis of Gwinnett County ethics ordinance that they provided. And so the scope of this committee's review, of course, consisted of reviewing the information received by 3DCC. We looked at ethics ordinances from other jurisdictions, we looked at the existing county conflict of interest and code of conduct ordinances already in place here in Henry County. We looked at purchasing ordinance, the personnel ordinance, state law ethics provisions, state election code provisions, and other provisions of state law as applicable, such as the zoning procedures law and criminal statutes that govern your conduct as elected officials. And so we took a pretty comprehensive review, in addition to our other duties and responsibilities here in the county, often working, you know, after-hours, weekends, and looking at this and trying to come up with a best proposal for you all and analysis of what was presented. Angie, you want to take this one?
First of all, we're going to look at the applicability of the ethics ordinance, and as you can see from this presentation, that the 3DCC ethics proposal applies to both the employees and the elected officials. However, the Ethics Ordinance Review Committee took a close look at what their recommendations, how they compare to what we actually have in our Henry County Personnel Ordinance. And we found that the Personnel Manual actually addresses many of the ethical issues relating to employees. And if we need to go into detail, you want to read them?
Yeah, just generally.
Here are just some general things, just so you'll know what we looked at. The employees, for example, are already prohibited from directly or indirectly accepting or soliciting any non-cash personal gifts over $50. They are prohibited from accepting or soliciting any personal gift in the form of service, loan, things, or promise from any person or entity where the employee has influence over any decision involving such person. In other words, granting any improper favor, service, or thing of value. The county employees are also, by our personnel policy, prohibited from engaging in any political activity during work hours or using county equipment for political purposes. And then a further look at our Personnel Manual goes on to say that the manual adequately addresses, or we feel as a committee that the manual adequately addresses, the conflict of issues pertaining to employees, which was another thing mentioned by the original proposal of 3DCC. County employees are already required to disclose any outside employment and self-employment, and those forms that they are required to fill out are reviewed by the county manager for any potential conflict of interest issues. And then if a conflict is found, the county manager denies that outside employment which could be construed as a conflict. And we have an example here, for example, that a building department employee cannot perform outside work within Henry County because that same inspector would be performing the inspections on behalf of the county. So he on the side could not be paid to inspect that same facility, for example. And we feel that the county has a stronger interest in resolving improper employee behavior through the Personnel Administration and Enforcement. Any allegations of improper behavior can and should be addressed in the form of employee discipline rather than through an ethics ordinance. And you, as a board, of course, have put in place county manager and staff who are tasked with administering that disciplinary action when it is deemed to be necessary. And of course, violations of any of the personnel policies can result in disciplinary action up to and including termination of employment. So as you see from the things, just the examples that we've used here, we feel all of the employee issues are adequately covered under our Personnel Policy Manual and are appropriately handled when deemed necessary to do so. So our recommendation in that area would be to have a clear policy separation between acts of employees and acts of elected and appointed officials. We just see that there's a division there, and the best way to handle that is to let the employees be handled under the Personnel Policy, and then this only apply to elected officials and your appointed officials. And just kind of, I will just continue on to the next one if you'd like, as kind of stemming from that, the 3DCC proposal actually attempts to extend its applicability to other boards and authorities. And some examples would be like the Henry County Water Authority and the Development Authority and the Board of Education. And of course, as you know, these entities are totally separate, distinct legal entities and are not under the direct control and supervision of the Board of Commissioners. So on this particular area, we recommend that any revised policy should be applicable only to the Board of Commissioners and your local boards under the direct supervision of the Board of Commissioners. For example, the zoning advisory board that has been mentioned here tonight, since you do not have any jurisdiction over these other boards, which they were trying to include in the policy. So that is our recommendation there.
So one of the first things that we attempted to address was whether or not there was a need for a revised ethics ordinance. As I indicated to you earlier, there is an existing county ethics ordinance in place, and there are code of conduct ordinances in place governing. and there are code of conduct ordinances in place governing you all's conduct, and in the, there is, in the state law, local law, there is a number of statutes and constitutional provisions that apply to your behavior. So what we undertook to do was to look to see whether or not there was any room for improving the existing ordinances, but with the goal of avoiding redundancy and duplication of legal criteria and requirements for which an adequate remedy already exists. So we didn't want to duplicate what was already sufficiently covered in existing local law and state law. In that same regard, there are currently existing several statutory provisions and a substantial body of case law that provides a basis for ethical mandates on public officials, beginning with the Georgia Constitution, which declares that a public office is an office of trust, and you are, and that public officials are amenable to those that they serve. And this is just, I won't read all of that, but this is a direct quote from the State Ethics Code that requires you to put loyalty to the highest moral principles, and you can't make private promises, special consideration, engage in any business which is inconsistent with the conscientious performance of your duties, and you are never to use any information coming to you confidentially in the performance of your public duties, and you are obligated to expose corruption wherever it's discovered, and uphold the principles consistent with the public office that you hold and the public trust that you are entrusted with. The, on the zoning, the three DCC proposal does address a number of disclosure requirements and requires, and proposes that the county adopt disclosure requirements, which undertook a review of disclosure requirements already in place under Georgia law, especially in zoning actions where it is specifically prohibited for any, for any public official to take any action on a zoning matter where that official has a property interest in the property, has a financial interest which is defined as ten percent or more, or has a family member, and that's defined as spouse, parents, and children, who has any interest in the property that's going to be affected by rezoning. Georgia law requires you to immediately disclose that interest in writing, disqualify yourselves, and not take any action or attempt to influence any action where any of those three conflicts exist. Violations of this statute is a misdemeanor crime, punishable by jail and fine. In that same regard, the conflict of interest in zoning action also has a mandate with respect to people who come before you. Any and every rezoning applicant has to disclose under oath whether or not they have made a contribution to any of you in the amount of two hundred fifty dollars or more within the two years of the date preceding the filing of the application. That has to be filed within ten days of the application being filed, and that disclosure requirement is a part of every rezoning file that comes before you, and it's a part of the public record available to any member who, of the public who would like to see that. And even with opponents of rezoning actions who come before you, they are required to make that same disclosure. And again, violation of this state statute is a misdemeanor crime, punishable by jail and/or fine. Does anybody want to address this? You want to go ahead?
Discretional question.
We compared the financial disclosure requirements that was in the proposal, in the proposal by three DCC with existing state law that covers, we feel covers the same thing.
That's correct. And as stated, we just felt it was, again, overly intrusive and intrusive toward the mem, not just the members, the board, but across the board, all the employees. So a couple of key points, county officials' employees should not be required to divulge property interests of all their relatives as a condition of public employment or public service. Again, we thought that was a bit over the top.
The proposal by three DCC did define requiring that any elected official, department head, any county employee has to disclose any property they own, and that would extend to the relatives of the employees and elected officials, which include your children, stepchildren, your brothers, sisters, stepparents, your nieces, nephews, uncles, aunts, grandparents, grandchildren, and any dependents. So as a condition of employment, every public employee under this proposal will have to contact all their family members who has any interest within the county or within one mile of the county. We looked at what the current state law required on those type of matters, and what state law says, the Georgia Government Transparency and Campaign Finance Act of 2010, that requires elected officials, candidates and or appointed officials, to disclose property interests of their relatives, and relatives include only the spouse and dependent children. So state law is much narrowly focused, and what was proposed in the three DCC proposal was very expansive. As Michael, as Michael stated, we felt that it was overly broad for several reasons.
Again, as stated, the requirements of divulge property interests of all relatives, we thought that was, again, overly broad. And as stated, state law and our own current provisions already address a number of these issues already. State open records law prohibits disclosure of home addresses of public employees, so it would be unlawful for the county to impose this requirement. County employees currently under our Personnel Manual are required to disclose outside business interests as stated previously. We've had cases of that, and that's been dealt with. State financial disclosure requirements for public officials are thorough, and also reports our public records as it currently states by state law. Zoning conflicts, as Ms. Wallace already mentioned, involving family members are already required to be disclosed under state law. Family members, including spouse, children, that's been a little bit further defined. In the end, the recommendation was zoning conflicts and the financial disclosure should be governed by current state law. Any revised code of ethics should not require any additional disclosure or reports to be filed. So we felt that the state law and our current policies in place address those issues specifically.
And again, comparing, comparing on the whistleblower protection, the proposal by three DCC offered and suggested that elected officials and employees are prohibited from taking any adverse action against an employee or official who files a complaint with the Board of Ethics or who participates in an ethics investigation, and also authorizes a lawsuit to be filed within ninety days if that proposal, if that provision was violated. And that provision is in direct conflict with state law. There is the Georgia Whistleblower Protection Act. Again, this proposal is covering an issue that's already adequately covered by state law. It was amended in two thousand and seven to include employees of local governments, and it prohibits any adverse action against a public employee for disclosing government waste, fraud, or abuse, and prohibits any policy or practice which prevents a public employee from disclosing waste, fraud, or abuse, and prohibits retaliation if an employee came forward and reported that, and that employee is protected by state law. Most importantly, state law authorizes a lawsuit to be filed within one to three years of the adverse action, as opposed to ninety days. So under state law, employees do have a sufficient, I feel, the committee feels, a sufficient remedy under state law if such a retaliatory action were to occur. So it was the committee's recommendation that state law gives broader protection to county employees with regards to reporting violation of wrongdoings on the part of county officials. Employees have a longer time which should file suit, one to three years versus ninety days as proposed, and at the end, we felt that duplication was not necessary, and any revised code of ethics should you all approve one, should defer to state law on this issue.
Under the code of ethics proposal presented by three DCC, they also proposed a board of ethics that would be made up of five Henry County residents, that would be comprised of two members of the Republican Party, two members of the Democratic Party, and one appointed by the Board of Commissioners. They were to be given reasonable compensation, but they would also incur other costs, significant costs I might add, due to legal counsel, hearing officers, an executive director, other staff as necessary, and office and equipment expenses. That board of ethics, under their proposal, would receive and investigate ethics complaints filed by others or on its own initiative. They would be able to conduct hearings and investigations, including issuing subpoenas. They would be able to recommend disciplinary action, suspension and removal from office. They would be able to file suit for damages. They would be able to render advisory opinions on ethics issues, provide training and education to officials, employees, and those doing business in the county. They would be able to review all financial disclosure statements, prepare annual reports, and recommend changes to the ethics ordinance. They would also be able to grant waivers to certain ethics requirements upon showing a compelling, of compelling need at an open session and after public notice. There's also a conspicuous absence of checks and balances in, under their proposal. The proposed ethics board has a great deal of power assigned to it. While the proposal states that the ethics board is to be nonpartisan, the fact that ninety percent of its membership is to be appointed by political parties says otherwise. This makes the actions of this proposed board ripe for political use and possible abuse. Noticeably missing from the proposal are any type of checks, balances, or limitations on the ethics board itself, and removal of any of these members are allowed only under limited circumstances. So the question we, as a committee, asked was who would police the actions of the ethics board? The committee's recommendation was to forego the creation of an independent, oh, am I missing a page in mine?
She may be missing a page, I'll just fill in.
Okay.
You can pick up. We looked at what the Carvinson study, it was one of the documents that we looked at, and we saw that only half of the Georgia County survey in that study had a permanent ethics board. And those that did have a board of ethics from the ones that we reviewed, either provided that the Board of Commissioners appointed the ethics members, or if it was a municipality, that municipality appointed, or there were certain public and private bodies who were appointed or assigned to appoint such members, such as the Chamber of Commerce, or county employees, local bar associations, but none of the county survey or otherwise reviewed by this committee had provisions that gave political parties the authority to appoint members of an ethics board.
Now I've got to find that page again. Okay. The committee's recommendation was that we should forego the creation of an independent ethics board because there was an opportunity for abuse and misuse of the process by unelected political partisans. There was a lack of checks and balances for the proposed board, and as proposed, the board has an extraordinary amount of power yet is unaccountable to any person or entity. The undisclosed, undetermined cost of compensating five ethics board members, an executive director, a lawyer, and other staff, as well as the cost of providing office space and equipment, could be a substantial expense for taxpayers, and the existence of sufficient legal remedies under state law to investigate and prosecute egregious acts of impropriety or wrongdoing by a public officials.
So we wanted to look at that. We wanted to look at what other existing legal provisions, and I've spoken to some of them as it pertained to zoning requirements and the constitutional mandate governing your ethical responsibilities as elected officials.
We currently already have in place what is known as special, a special purpose grand jury. Georgia allows for the impaneling of special purpose grand juries for the purpose of investigating alleged criminal or civil violations of the laws of the state committed by public officials. The grand jury has the power to inspect or investigate the conditions and operations of any county office, department, or official. It works because the chief judge of the Superior Court, on his own motion or on petition of any elected public official of the county, may request the judges of the Superior Court of the county to impanel a special grand jury for the purpose of investigating any alleged violation of the law. The chief judge must admit the question of impaneling a special grand jury to the judges of the Superior Court of the county, and if a majority of the total number of judges vote in favor of impaneling a grand jury, the members of the special grand jury shall be impaneled of not less than sixteen nor more than twenty-three persons. The special grand jury has the authority to compel evidence and subpoena witnesses, inspect records, documents, correspondence, and books of any department, agency, board, bureau, commission, institution of the county, and may require the production of records, documents, correspondence, and books of any person, firm, or corporation which relate directly or indirectly to the subject of the investigation being conducted.
And most, you know, the recent events in Gwinnett County were the result of special purpose grand jury proceedings, and everyone is aware, or should be aware, of the results of that special grand jury proceeding, which resulted in the Gwinnett County chairman resigning from office, a city commissioner being indicted, and a retired superior court judge being relieved of senior status duties as a result of improper actions that were found by the special grand jury that was impaneled at the request of the district attorney who received complaints from citizens. And most notable is that Gwinnett County has had an ethics ordinance with a permanent board of ethics in place since nineteen ninety-three, yet that process that was in place under Georgia law, the special purpose grand jury, was the entity that ultimately caused those efforts, or those results to occur.
So as you can see, the creation of a board of ethics does not necessarily mean that it will be an effective tool to address political malfeasance, especially where more stringent legal processes already exist.
And what, what I undertook to do was to look at state statutes in place that governs official malfeasance, and looked at criminal statutes in particular. And there are a number of them. Bribery, penalty of five thousand dollar fine and one to twenty years in prison. I don't need to read what bribery is, everyone knows what that is. Selling influence, a public official who tries to sell his influence for any, or attempt to influence an official action of another public official or employee of the county. Anyone guilty of selling their influence, hundred thousand dollar maximum fine and or one to five years in prison. Extortion, public officials who demand or receive under color of office money, fees, or other things of value that they are not entitled to receive. The law says the mandatory removal from office is the penalty, and these are existing state statutes under Georgia law. Political coercion, public officials who coerce or attempt to coerce either directly or indirectly any other public official or employee to pay, lend, or contribute money to any person, organization, or party for political purpose. It's a misdemeanor crime, thousand dollar maximum fine, and or twelve months in prison. Violation of oath of office, and we talked about that early on with the Georgia Constitution mandates, a public official who willfully and intentionally violates the terms of his or her oath of office can be imprisoned for one to five years. Conspiracy to defraud, if you conspire with others to commit theft of any property that belongs to a local government, or that is under the control of a public official in his or her official capacity, that is a crime, and the punishment is imprisonment of one to five years. The illegal letting of contracts, if you take, receive, or contract, take or receive any party, from any party, any pay or profit arising out of a public works contract, it's a misdemeanor crime, thousand dollar maximum fine, and or twelve months in prison. Now, practice, partiality, neglect of duties, conduct, unbecoming of one's office, is a misdemeanor fine, and thousand dollar maximum fine, twelve months in prison, and in addition, the official will be removed from office. So in addition to all of the state law provisions that I have just referenced, we also, as I indicated to you earlier, reviewed the county's existing conflict of ordinance, conflict of interest ordinance. And we found that even in the absence of adoption of a revised ethics ordinance, we do have an existing conflict of interest ordinance that has strong mandates which prohibit official misconduct, and Michael will speak to those.
Yeah, as we went through, as stated earlier, there's a number of documents that we reviewed during this process, and the one common thread that we noticed is there were these, principally these ten issues that existed in all the other jurisdictions and throughout. Those included conflict of interest, appearance of impropriety, gift ban, disclosure and interest of disqualification and recusal, use of public property, procurement and contracts, incompatible employment, disclosing confidential information, nepotism, and penalties. And as stated, you know, and you've heard quite a bit of it, you know, a lot of our own current ordinances today address those issues, if not our ordinances, then the state statutes, but what I wanted to go through is kind of pick up on some of our current county ordinances, what we currently have in place addressing those issues. Currently, the county ordinance calls that states that no county, no company shall sell supplies, equipment goods, or any other type of personal property in which a board member, commission member, or authority board member has any financial interest to the county. Again, what that says is that companies in which a public official has an interest are prohibited from selling any supplies or goods to the county. Furthermore, no board member, commission member, authority member, or employee shall give gifts, entertainment, or any other personal favor to any corporation, entity, or organization with whom, or with which Henry County may have, or is likely to have, any kind of business dealings. And again, public officials are banned from giving gifts of personal, or personal favors to organizations doing business with the county. And these are, these are, again, the issues that are, these are the points that are already in our current ordinance. No public official may accept any non-cash personal gift over fifty dollars in value from any person, private firm, corporation, and a no cash shell board member, commission member. member, or authority member or employee accept any cash gift or payment of any kind. Public officials are prohibited from receiving cash gifts above fifty, receiving gifts above fifty dollars, and absolutely no cash gifts are absolutely banned. And we did look at this in reviewing some of the other jurisdictions, and we did propose a modification to this one particular issue. Yeah, committee concluded that the definition of gift and any exception should be expressly defined and exceptions noted, and that was also addressed in the revision. Members of the Board of Commissioners may accept complimentary tickets or admission to advanced meetings, seminars, other gatherings where which attendance could serve the county by providing access to local, state, federal, business, civic, or government leaders. And again, this provision is consistent in every document we looked at, other jurisdictions across the board. Each public officer and any person employed in the capacity by such persons required to disclose any outside activities, interests, or investments that may conflict with a suggest potential conflict within the best, best interest of Henry County. Talked about that a little bit earlier. Disclosure of incompatible employment or outside activities. We did revise the ordinance to specify timing and manner in which disclosure should take place, so that was, we still left the disclosure, they had to disclose, but just kind of tweaked it a little bit to address timing and manner. No public official or any, or person employed in the capacity of each board or authority shall participate in any decision-making process relative to the business of Henry County where that board member has the potential to gain some personal profit from the decision to be made or because of some personal interest in the matter before the board, which the board member may be prevented from or may appear to have been prevented from making an unbiased decision with respect to the matter. Prohibition against using confidential information for personal or private gain, and again, that was consistent across the board, and that's already currently addressed in our ordinance. Finalizing, in any decision-making process of the county Board of Commissioners or any of its authorities or commission, immediately upon a potential conflict of interest of a board member becoming apparent to that board member, the board member shall immediately inform the board of the potential conflict and shall immediately terminate all involvement and input into the relevant decision-making process regarding the conflict of interest matter. Disclosure and disqualification mandate, however, the committee felt that the revision was needed on this topic. Presently, board members abstain from voting without any formal statements, and we've seen it actually in recent weeks where there has been disclosures on the issues that have come up, so it's already kind of being in place. I think it's already, it's been, we want to make sure we formalize the process. I think that's what, that's what we do in, with the revision. If any board member, authority member, or any person employed in any capacity by each board or authority violates provisions of this section, all relevant information shall be turned over to the appropriate authorities in the Board of Commissioners for investigation and possible prosecution. Adding a penalty provision was one of the, one of the big steps that we addressed in this process, and that'll be addressed a little bit later on as well, but that was one of the things we felt we needed to, there was something in there currently we thought it needed to be just kind of tweaked somewhat as well, and that was done in the revision. I think that's it, yes.
So, with all of that, that sort of formed the basis of the committee's thinking and our analysis and how we move forward in coming up with suggested revisions to the hearing counties' conflict of interest ordinance that we would like to present to you all for consideration, again, for the first time as a full body tonight. You have before you a resolution, and these are significant excerpts from the proposed revisions that the committee is suggesting to the board tonight for discussion and possible consideration. In keeping with the committee's goal of limiting the, any revised ethics ordinance to county officials, then we thought that the definition of who would be subject to a revised ethics ordinance should be specifically outlined, so would not include county employees, but would include county commissioners and persons appointed by you all or other bodies under your jurisdiction. The existing county ordinance does not define interest. We're talking about conflict of interest, but for, in nearly every ethics ordinance that we reviewed, interest was defined and broken down. Incidental interest, which would mean things that have insignificant value, which would not rise to the level of a, of a conflict of interest. Remote interest would mean the interest of a person or entity, including a county official or employee, that will be affected in the same way as the public generally or employees generally. An example that we gave is that, you know, obviously, if the county, if the elected officials decide to take a vote on the tax rate, or any kind of general accounting fees or accounting utility charges, or comprehensive zoning ordinance, obviously, you and those in privy with you would be affected, but those individuals will be affected in the same way as the general public. The same with, if you wanted to have a across-the-board pay decrease or increase for county employees, and you happen to have a relative who works with the county, then as long as the employee generally will be affected as those who are similarly situated, or the public generally, then that will be a remote interest that would not be subject to being deemed a significant or substantial conflict of interest. In defining substantial interest, we propose that the definition that be adopted is any financial interest or personal interest that where, or any other direct or indirect pecuniary or material benefit held by a public official as a result of any type of contract, employment relationship, transaction, that may be the subject of official action on part of the board. And the term would not include remote interest or incidental, incidental interest. Continuing on the definition of substantial interest, an official will be deemed to have substantial interest in matters and transactions involving any person and his or her immediate family who will or may receive a direct benefit not commonly shared by others who are similarly situated, or any person with a contractual relationship whereby the official will receive payment or other benefit. Any entity in which the official or the member of the official's immediate family member is a director, officer, or substantial shareholder will be deemed a substantial interest. Or any transaction in which the official or the official's immediate family member is a creditor, debtor, debtor, or guarantor of a person who is before you seeking approval or formal action where that amount is five thousand dollars or more. We define gift in the proposed revision. We indicate the gift should not include a benefit that's received or given on a terms available to the general public. So, if Shane's was giving out free sandwiches, pork sandwiches, then you all would be allowed to go, because if he was offering it to the public in general, you would be allowed to partake in that gift. And we excluded what gift items that were not included with gift, and those are consistent with provisions. All those eight items are consistent with what we found in other jurisdictions, so we didn't step out and do anything toward, and we incorporated the existing provisions in our county ordinance in this one. The proposed ordinance before you prohibits special consideration or treatment being given to you or any immediate family members, prohibits the use of confidential information, prohibits conflicting representation, prohibits bribery, which is already covered by state law, the misuse of public funds, the misuse of public equipment, nepotism, special privileges being granted for family and business associates. And it indicates that wherever there's a conflict of interest or substantial interest, a county official cannot participate when there's a substantial interest. And the disclosure requirements that Michael spoke about that we thought needed tweaking was that, we felt that for the record, and Julie may want to speak to this, you want to speak to this, Julie? No, you want me to? That the, the process should be that the elected officials should publicly disclose the fact and nature of the interest on the record, and then refrain from any discussion or vote, and that happens, but sometimes, in the past, sometimes the board members have abstained from acting on certain things, but not really disclosed publicly. We may have talked about it outside of the public purview, but we felt that if we disclose on the record what the nature of the interest is, and that to have the county clerk maintain a separate record of all those recusals so that anybody who wants to see those recusal can have readily access to it. And if a question arises concerning conflict of interest during the public session, then the county attorney should be consulted, and then the assets of the county attorney and the chairman should be consulted. Notably, we know that if there's a remote or incidental interest, that the county official may participate in the vote and need not disclose the interest, and that's consistent with other jurisdictions. We know that any unnecessary abstentions or recusals will be contrary to your duties in function of public office, so the committee felt that it really was intrinsic to your duties as elected officials to vote when there were no reasons for you not to vote, so unnecessary recusals or abstentions we put in the proposal should be avoided at all costs. The proposed revision also deals with public contracts and discusses when a substantial interest involves a public contract that is before you. So, contracts need to be competitively procured, and you are prohibited from participating in any aspect of any kind of contract where a family member is involved. Obviously, if the county wants to sign or seek the services of a bank, you know, if you have an account at First State Bank, and First State Bank is bidding on it to be awarded a county contract for holding our funds, then obviously, you can vote on that because that is not deemed a significant and substantial interest, and that is what is consistent across the board. Borrowing funds from any bank or lending institution, obviously, would not be something that you would have to recuse yourself from when you are making decisions on behalf of the county, and the exception would be for contracts for services that were entered into where the business is the only available source for such goods or services. And those contracts that were entered into under circumstances which constitute an emergency situation, those would not have to be publicly procured, and that's already in our code, but there should be a public record explaining the emergency prepared by the county manager and submitted to the board at its next regular meeting. One of the things that three C.C. recommended was disclosure. So, what we decided and we were looking at, what type of disclosures should be required under this proposed revision? We did feel that financial disclosure that were already required to be disclosed under federal, state law should remain in place. Disclosures regarding zoning applications are already required by state law, and we decided to add with respect to people who are doing business with the county, we felt that it would be a good idea if on an annual basis, the county published on its website a list of all vendors who received payment from the county during the preceding fiscal year. That information is already available if someone wanted to make that request, but we felt that it would be a good idea to have the county take a proactive step and put that on, on the website every year so that anyone who wishes to see it can see it, and if they wanted to get additional information, they can request it, but we felt that that was an obligation that the county should undertake. One of the things that was missing from the existing conflict of interest ordinance was a process for receiving the complaints and how they will be handled. So, what we did was we suggested a complaint process. It requires that any type of complaint concerning a violation of the ethics ordinance should be filed and submitted in writing under oath and submitted to the clerk of the Board of Commissioners. The clerk will be required to submit the complaint to the county attorney, the county official charged, and the remaining members of the commissioners.
Upon receipt of a complaint in proper form and no later than thirty days thereof, the county attorney shall forward the same to duly qualified hearing officer for review, and the hearing officer shall be authorized to primarily determine whether the complaint is facially invalid or unjustified, frivolous, patently unfounded, or fails to state facts sufficient to state violation of the ordinance. If such finding is determined by the hearing officer, the hearing officer, the hearing officer shall enter written findings and transmit such findings to the board for final action, and any such action taken by the board should be done so by way of the public, by a public vote. For complaints that are not dismissed, the hearing officer shall be empowered to hold hearings, collect evidence and information concerning the complaint, and add, add the findings and results of the investigations to the file containing such complaint. In any investigation, the complaining party must appear before the hearing officer to provide testimony under oath and provide requested information concerning the allegations in the complaint. Failure of the complainant to cooperate in investigation in any manner will result in the automatic dismissal of the complaint, and we went back and forth, we thought that was a critical element to make sure was added and included in the process.
Well, what we wanted to address was a situation where people were just filing complaints and then turning their backs on them. We felt that this is such a serious issue that if a complainant came forward to file a complaint, then that complainant then be required to participate in the investigation to its conclusion.
All investigations shall be completed within a reasonable period of time. Upon conclusion, upon conclusion of the investigation, the hearing officer shall enter written findings and transmit such findings to the board for final action, and upon receipt of the hearing officer's findings, the board should publicly vote to either, one, dismiss the complaint for lack of evidence, or two, take other action as is consistent with the ordinance and the evidence adduced during the investigation.
Again, we felt that because it was the committee's recommendation to forego the creation of an ethics board, and because you as elected officials are ultimately accountable to the public, we felt that once the hearing officer completed his or her review and findings that were submitted to you, that you would take a public vote on how you all want to handle the situation, but any finality with respect to any investigation would have to be made by way of public vote in keeping with open, transparent government. We put a timeframe that the hearing should be held within sixty days after the filing of the complaint so that they would not linger unnecessarily unless it was continued for good cause. The county official that will be subject to the inquiry will have the right, but not the obligation, of submitting evidence and calling witnesses, and we also put in there that failure to comply with those deadlines will not invalidate a valid complaint or affect the power of jurisdiction of the board or hearing official to act upon any complaint.
Penalty, penalty against the officials. Any official found to have violated any provision of this article will be subject to public reprimand or censure by the county, or reimbursement or restitution to the county, or referral of the matter to the appropriate authorities for investigation and possible prosecution, or any combination of the above.
Penalty against the complainant. We added this, and as our source at the bottom of the screen, the state ethics law allows the state ethics commission the ability to award attorney's fees to the party complained against if the commission finds the complaint to be frivolous legally or factually, or if the complaining party fails without good cause to appear at the preliminary hearing on the complaint. So, in that same regard, and using the state ethics law as our basis, it was our recommendation that any complainant who has failed to have filed a frivolous complaint or has refused to participate in the investigation following the filing of the complaint, which results in its dismissal, will be subject to reimbursement or restitution to either the county and or the public official for attorney's fees and or expenses, and that's the typo, for expenses incurred in handling the complaint, and it authorizes the county attorney's office to file suit in the appropriate court in order to enforce any such award imposed by the board in that regard. There's a right to appeal by either party, either the county official or the complainant who has been adversely affected by the findings or recommendations of the Board of Commissioners can seek judicial review within thirty days of the final decision. And the filing of the appeal will stay enforcement of any penalty imposed until the appeal process has run its course. That concludes our presentation to you.
We certainly did a very thorough job of reviewing everything and presenting it here this evening. At this time, I'd like to open up questioning to the board, if there are any questions or comments that, from anything you were presented tonight. Mr. Alada?
I would just like to thank the committee for the work, the meetings we've had. I know you've done an exhaustive review of evidence tier and what wasn't evidence tier and discussions, and just, again, thank you for the thorough way in which you did this and, and looking at all sides of it, and fair and balanced, I guess. I just want to express my thanks for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bowden?
Well, I too, I'll echo Commissioner Alada's response. I know you guys worked a long time, and there was an awful lot of reading and investigating and everything else to find out, you know, that, from the state side and from other counties, and I think you did a very good job in what you've done, and I appreciate it, and I know it took a long time, but I, I seen the work that you were working on, and there was an awful lot of reading that was done after hours and done at home when you could have been doing other things, and I want -- I also appreciate what you've done and the fact that you worked so diligently and so hard to bring it to process. From me personally, thank you.
And I would add to that, Commissioners, that the committee wants to thank the board because when we were selected to undertake this task, we did not get any type of feedback or input from the commissioners. Y'all let the committee do its work, and we did. And the committee did not feel any pressure, any type of, any kind of impetus from the board to reach a certain conclusion, and we've given you tonight what is the result of our best efforts and our recommendations to you to consider.
Mr. Holder, did you have some comments or questions?
Just some comments, and I'd like to echo what Commissioner Aletta and Bowman both said about the work that you'd put into it. And this being the first time that six of us, all six of us have sat here and heard this, we have had meetings three and three, but to hear what each person's concerns are makes a difference. I have some specific questions that I'd like to ask. I'm still not sure about what the final determination was. As far as immediate family, now, part of it, according to state law, it just says spouses and dependent children, I believe is what it says. But in what I'm reading here, it says mother, father, grandparent, brother, sister, son, or daughter of any county official related by blood, adoption, or marriage, which includes in-laws. Now, what is what? I mean, which one are we going by?
State law, and I did put that in there for y'all to consider because this is just a model and a suggestion to y'all. State law does limit, and zoning actions limit, the definition of immediate family. What's before you is a little more expansive, and it would be beneficial for you as a board to discuss whether or not you would like to limit that because, you know, what was proposed, we felt by 3DCC was way too expansive, and we sort of met somewhere in the middle, but it's still room. Under state law, we can use that as a guide and follow the definitions for zoning conflicts.
But, okay, what you said is on zoning conflicts, that it limits it to spouse and dependent children.
Yes.
But as far as the ethics committee, or any, the ethics commission, what, how does it determine it?
The ethics commi, the state ethics board that requires the disclosure of property does limit it as well to your spouse and dependents.
The reason I ask that, and I'm certainly wanting to make it just as public as I can. I have in-laws, I have a daughter-in-law, I have a son-in-law, and I have a sister-in-law that work in various departments and agencies throughout the county. If it was a vote that directly involved any one of them, I would certainly recuse myself.
That's right.
But the way this is written, and the way I'm interpreting it, that means that if I voted on someone in the police department, the SPOS department, the Department of Transportation, or any department, or even another authority within this county, that that person, I couldn't vote on anything. Am I reading it right, or am I interpreting it wrong?
Well, I think, in an effort to avoid that drastic and unintended result, if you look under section HI, when we discuss family member, we discuss any person who will or may receive a direct benefit not commonly shared by others who are similarly situated.
Which, obviously, you would recuse at that point.
Correct. If there was a direct request from one of your immediate family members for some type of action related to his or her employment, then obviously you would not be in a position to vote on that, and that would be a substantial interest, and you could not vote. If you were voting to give county employees, considering to give county employees raises across the board that would be equally shared and equally distributed by everyone similarly situated to your family member, that would not be a conflict of interest because that would be shared by all employees as a whole. So, I tried to make that distinction in the proposal before you because, obviously, with seventeen hundred employees, there are familial relationships that people have and elected officials have currently.
I don't think I'm different from other people here on the board, but what this does, and I certainly hope it's not the intent of this, but anyone who has lived here for any length of time, or has relatives within this county, are basically being taken out of being able to serve in a public position, and I think that's wrong. As far as any wrongdoing, or as far as recusing if there is a conflict of interest, I have no problem with that, never have. But I think this, the way I'm reading it, it may open some doors for people to interpret that to be a conflict. Now, I know there are provisions in this way, if somebody does bring a frivolous complaint, that the person bringing the frivolous complaint will end up having to pay attorney's fees and can be subject to fine or whatever themselves.
Right.
I understand that we're all public officials and that we have to take heat from the public, no question. I've been here a long time. But to have to defend something that's frivolous, I think, and I'm glad you put that in there, where it's not one way, you can't just shoot at me all the time, and I can't shoot back. And that's basically what it amounts to. Am I interpreting that right?
Yes, you are. And let me be clear, there was never the intent to prohibit you as an elected official from taking action. For example, as we indicated in one of the scenarios, if you voted to increase taxes, you know, your family members own property, that would be affected by everyone, you know, who pays, who owns property, who pays property taxes. So, this intent is not to prohibit you from doing things that will affect your family member who may be affected in a general way, as are other people similarly situated. It's not intended to prevent you from taking action in that regard. I tried to tweak that language to address that. The overzealous could attempt, I think, to try to argue otherwise, but I do think that with the provisions we've put in here, that we could successfully argue and show that that was not the intent of this ordinance.
Are you sort of saying, under the immediate family, that you would rather read that you defer to the definition under state law?
Absolutely.
And not the expanded?
Not the expanded, where it includes everything but your family dog.
I'll concur with that. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item?
And I'm kind of piggybacking on Commissioner Holder's. I guess in the zoning issues, I own property in all five districts. So, I suppose I could say, I'm sorry, you know, I own property in that district, so therefore I'm not, I wouldn't vote on anything. And really, you know, it could be said, well, your property's six blocks away, and it could benefit from it down the road somewhere. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, I mean, there's, it can be taken a lot of wrong directions.
Well, what we're trying to do in deferring to state law, state law requires you to have an interest, a direct interest in the property that's before you. So, if someone came up and they were zoning property, you would have to have an interest in that property of ten percent or more in order for a conflict of interest to be found under state law.
Anyone else? This is not really required before I ask for a motion, but I'm going to do it anyway because I feel like it's important to get some input. But I wanted to see if there were any citizens here tonight. I know one has expressed an interest to speak, if you would like to come and speak on the proposed ethics, what do we call on it, Code of Ordinances of Henry County, Ethics Code of Ordinance for Henry County. At this time, if you would please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, we're going to set aside fifteen minutes for public comment. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you Chairman Mathis and Commissioners for opening this floor up for public comment. My name is Charles Downey. I live at 557 Heathmore Drive, McDonough. On behalf of Mike Addy, President of 3DCC, who could not be here tonight, we at 3DCC would like to thank you and the Board of Commissioners for considering our proposed Unified Code of Ethics we presented back in July. Also, we'd like to thank Chairman Mathis, Commissioners Aletta, for meeting with us, and we'd like to express a special thank you to Commissioner Stamey for assisting us and guiding us through this process from the very beginning. We can't forget the County Ethics Committee, which was led by County Attorney Wiley, for all their hard work. By the way, you messed up my prepared comments here. Glad to see they did all that hard work and put all that time into it. As the committee pointed out, ethics is very complicated. We found that out during our study. And, let's see, as the old saying goes, an ounce of provision is worth a pound of cure. That was our main goal when we drafted the proposed Code of Ethics. In our study, we found that there were bits and pieces of the Code of Ethics scattered all over different regulations, state law, et cetera. And one thing that we would like to see is that all these bits and pieces be brought together into a Unified Code of Ethics, very similar to the Unified Land Development Code, which would make it easier for everybody to follow. And we do believe that a Board of Ethics is needed. A good example is when a negative news story breaks out, fortunately, we haven't had very many in this past ten years, but when one does, as you know, the media immediately makes the accused guilty, and the accused has no way to prove their innocence. And then with a Board of Ethics, the accused can prove their innocence, or they can be And have you ever dealt with the state? As Ms. Wiley pointed out, there's a lot of state laws on the books. However, they're hard to reach for the average citizen. In order for average citizens to file an ethics complaint, they basically have to hire a lawyer, which is not right. We need to simplify the process. Anyway, I have not seen, we have not seen the committee's report, so we're not prepared to comment on the report per se, verbatim by item by item. But we do appreciate the report, and we appreciate the Board of Commissioners considering in updating the ethics codes here in the county, not only the ethics codes, but the policies and procedures. And we would like to see a Unified Code of Ethics, and thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? If you would, please state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
I'm Mayor Robinson. I live in the third district. I came here dubious, pleasantly surprised. Truthfully, truthfully, how many of this board has read the county ethics, word for word? How many? This is a history lesson that I wish all of those people could have been here to see, to listen to. These people have done a fantastic job. I feel that we, I appreciate what the 3DCC has done in bringing this to a head, and I feel that this board, with the presentation that's made here tonight, will put Henry County above the rest of the counties in this area, just by the additions and amendments that they have made to the existing Ethics Board. I would suggest one thing, that once this is finalized, this board takes the time, if it's only ten people at a time, to get county employees to hear what we heard tonight. All county employees need to hear what was presented here tonight so that there is no doubt that Henry County is a true ethics county. And I thank you very much for your attention to this Board of Ethics. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Yes, if you would, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you Chairman Mathis, Board of Commissioners. My name's Don Dunlap. I live at 192 Ashley Drive in McDonough. I just heard there was an ethics discussion this evening, and I like ethics because I teach high school and I want my kids to be ethical. I thought the presentation was awesome. I think it's kind of neat that there's a bunch of citizens in this 3DCC organization that felt enough about it to get this out there, get the conversation going, get the research going, and have all this brought together. You know, it sounds like there's a great plan in place, a great proposal in place. The only thing that worries me a little bit, based on what Charles was saying a second ago, was accessibility, making sure that the average citizen, once this is all put together, that this is accessible to them without complex legal counsel, and that that's somehow part of this process. Something I thought was interesting this evening, just as a sidebar, I noticed in the presentation that if there's a contribution of $250 or more to any political member, that that's supposed to be disclosed if you oppose a zoning ordinance. And that's obviously, you know, law that's part of our process and procedure that's already in place. But we had a zoning motion in place this evening, and we had two people that spoke in opposition. Did we hear their financial disclosures? And what I'm, the reason I'm saying that is, we can put the rules in place, but we also need to ensure that there's some way that they're implemented fairly consistently and without it being very onerous. I just throw that out as a comment, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
We have six minutes remaining, a little more if anyone else would like to speak on this issue. We welcome your comments at this time. All right, is there any further discussion from the board on this matter? All right, I do want to make just a quick comment because sometimes when you have a very lengthy presentation, sometimes the clarity gets lost in all of the information that is thrown out. I don't want any citizen to think that this board has been operating in the absence of any type of ethics governance up until this point. The commission has operated under the state laws. We also have a Code of Conduct for Commissioners. We also have had the personnel policy and other applicable ordinances that have related to conduct for elected officials, for county commissioners. So, we've had those things in place. We've not been just running rampant and doing whatever mischief we wanted to do, assuming that any of us wanted to be involved in mischief, which we don't. But I wanted to say that to get to this point. The idea behind this is, this is a revised ethics ordinance, not a new one, but a revised one. And it's pulling all of those elements together into one document that, hopefully, we will have a link on our website, that any citizen can go to, and they can click it on, and they can see what exactly is in place to govern the actions of their elected officials. And so, that's good that we're going to have that accessibility because it's hard to track this stuff down when you have several different places that you're having to look. track this stuff down, when you have several different places that you're having to look. I know 3DCC was surprised in a preliminary meeting that we had, that we had a county personnel policy that covered many of the issues that they brought to the boards for consideration, and they were already in place. So from that sense, it's good to bring it all into one document that's easy to locate and to know what the processes are that are out there, should you have an ethics complaint. So thank you again to our board, our committee that got together and spent countless hours on this. We greatly appreciate you doing it, it was a lot of work, but something I think that we can all be proud of at the end of the day. And with that being said, if there's no other comments from the board, you have before you a revised ethics ordinance as presented by the county attorney. Commissioner Holder had stated in there that he wished in Section 3, under Item E, under immediate family, that that referenced the state law versus the expanded recommendation for the committee that met. And with that being said, I will look to someone to make a motion on this item.
Madam Chair, if I could make this comment before a motion's made. I know Mr. Downey had indicated that, of course, they have not seen it until tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Downey? And I know we're ready to get resolve on this, but this is the first night also that all six of us at one time has seen it. We've seen it three and three. I would like to suggest that the 3DCC, Mr. Downey, whoever their representative is, or whoever gets the copy of this, and one month from our third meeting in May, then we, that gives you time to make suggestions, contact who you need to contact, and we have it ready for adoption at the meeting in May. That's just a thought. Now, if you want to get a motion and can get a vote on it tonight, then that's fine. I'm just saying, they have not seen it, this is the first time. We've seen it as a whole.
And I also think that there's been some changes made, like from the time that three of us, I know that, see, we heard it, you know, that one, so we've heard, I heard some changes tonight that I didn't hear when it came to us, and I'm sure the other three heard some changes that they didn't see. I mean, I didn't see anything that startled me by no stretch of the imagination, I did not. But, and I think, there again, I think our people have done a great job, but, you know, I may be in fairness to everyone, both groups, that maybe we should do that, you know, I'm just, just a thought.
Well, it's still going to require a motion.
Okay, if it requires a motion, I will make the motion that we offer to the 3DCC and to the public, the proposed ordinance as presented tonight by staff, and that we bring it back for consideration and adoption on the third Tuesday.
Tuesday of May.
Of May, which is 30 days from today. No, I say 30 days, it's four weeks from today.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table the item and bring it back for consideration at the third Tuesday meeting in May by Mr. Holder, and a second by Mr. Bowman. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Okay, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. And when we come back in the third meeting in May, do we have to do the entire presentation a second time? Okay, thank you. Mr. County Manager, you had a public comment this evening.
I appreciate your indulgence in addressing the fire service agreement between Henry County and the City of McDonough for the final time. We have been working with the city to do several things, allowing them to explore various options that they may have regarding to fire service, as well as quantifying and verifying some of the numbers that are involved in this discussion, operating numbers. And the final piece of the puzzle is an updated digest, which Mr. Bush and his office are putting together currently. We're ready to call a Fire Services Consolidation Committee together. The city is working on a date, it probably will happen sometime in the next week, or sometime next week. We need to finalize our own budget situation between now and then. But I would ask for one final postponement until June the 6th, where we could put this issue to rest.
Does any board member have a question or comment about that? All right, if not, you do have a resolution before you authorizing the extension of this until June the 6th of 2011. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. No one has signed up for public comment. The upcoming meetings and events, Thursday, April the 21st at 4:00 p.m., we have a joint called meeting with the Henry County Development Authority and the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority, and that will be held in Conference Room B. On Friday, April the 22nd, all county offices will be closed for an official county holiday. And Monday, April the 25th, all county offices will be closed for a furlough day. Monday, May the 2nd at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting. And Tuesday, May the 3rd at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular board meeting. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.